The only new, I'll draw a portion of it, I'll draw your attention to is in the upper left-hand corner. These are some of the unknown impacts in conversations with the executive office. They've anticipated these raise issues and the net impact that's going to be. My only point to you is we're comfortable with that and probably the executive office or the fiscal office within the CEO's office probably just needs to validate that our numbers are tracking with those numbers. I will tell you this, that the projection for our contract cities is 17 out of 28 cities that we police, somewhere will net a three to five percent increase in their costs this next year. And that will of course be retroactive back to July. And as you've charged me, and previous sheriffs were charged by the board of supervisors, I am unable to give any county funds away. I do not have that ability lawfully to do that. And you charged me with full cost recovery. So wherever those costs are increased, I end up having to eat that quite little in the unincorporated area, which is already going down to the nubs. We cannot end up doing that. So, but those are real costs in each of your districts for our contract cities that we'll end up sorting out. And we'll have the precise numbers somewhere around February. Each year we do a snapshot of what our real labor costs are because that's the biggest component of the contract rate. And then we end up charging them retroactive back to the start of the fiscal year. And that's again, to keep from giving away county, net county cost dollars to subsidize cities. And as we talked before, my moral and legal responsibility is that county does not subsidize any of the city operations and vice versa. The cities are not subsidizing county operations. Next slide. AB 109 impact. And I think almost every day in the papers you can end up reading, no surprise, we've -- the jail has expanded its operations. If you recall, out of the money that we got allocated back from the state for AB 109 implementation, the sheriff's office got roughly $10 million and some change to end up basically spooling up our jail system to full staffing and then pushing it beyond for alternative sentencing. And since this last fall, you have the roll-up of all our department plans in minute detail as far as all those alternative sentencing programs. I know there's been some discussion come up over the last several board meetings about what exactly and that is detailed and the county, including the sheriff's office, is marching in accordance with that plan. So all those alternative sentencing issues, everything that we can find lawfully to do, the other issues that we're still trying to get legislation and legal changes to end up to 109 to enable some of those areas like contracts and so on, those are still pursued and will continue to be pursued. This is a recap. All the issues that I had talked to you and as a status board so to speak in March have been resolved. The only issue is the very last item there with 6.2 million and as I said, if the net county cost impact is somewhere around that, we're in agreement with the CEO's office. And the CEO's office says, as they've indicated to us, has already plugged in the numbers for our department as well as the other departments. We're good to go and we have a clean budget for next year. Next slide. Recap of the slide that you saw back in March. And as you see, the arrow is continuing downward. And I want to spend just a couple of minutes talking about this because this is a critical public safety issue for you. I do have a firm recommendation. We're dropping quite a bit. We started out the fiscal year, last year's budget time, at just a hair over one per thousand. And as you recall, a couple of years ago, the county actually peaked, not in theory, but in practice of hitting 1.2 per thousand. And then we did the first series of savings and dropped it from 1.2 down to 1.1. This is irrespective of contracts. We're just talking about ratios to the unincorporated area. And we were helped along by two of the incorporations clearly because you have to take, move deputies out of one column and plug them into another column to deal with that. But that ratio stays still focused on just unincorporated population. We've now hit at .86, that's our current status. So we are still plummeting. We will hit rock bottom by sometime as I project near the end of summer. And now what that means to you is that most stations will have only two deputy sheriffs, sometimes for 800, 900 square miles at any given time on duty in the unincorporated area. There's been very little tweaking or downsizing in our contracts. We've had probably a net loss so far this year of somewhere on the order of 13 to 15 positions out of all of them. And if you recall, over 70% of our black and white patrol force right now actually serves contract cities. So the unincorporated area is increasingly a small area. It's not a big area geographically, but very small area as far as the focus of our manpower. It will hit rock bottom. What that means are no proactive programs that'll be in place. Most of them have been stripped out as deputies largely in the public's eyes vaporized. In theory last summer, but real practice is spring. So you've seen it as far as way as Supervisor Stone in Idlewild. We've seen it out in the Coachella Valley. We've seen it out in the Lake Matthews area. Throughout the county, the drawdown, we tried to keep all the force staffing levels relatively same in the stations so that one plummeted because they had excess number of retirements or losses. We still balance it out to keep safe staffing levels. However, by the end of summer, the only crutch that I will have is to burn overtime to maintain minimum staffing. We will hit rock bottom floor. And we use a lot, the minimum staffing that we use is a deputy and a cover deputy. That's the minimum that we operate with. That's like it was many years ago when we were backed up on calls. All the zone policing has gone by the wayside. The specialized reaction teams to deal with local county unincorporated problems are almost all gone. Anything extra right now, the deputies that used to meet with the various zones and talk to the public, all that's been stripped away. So we've achieved those savings, but at considerable cost. I'll come back to my recommendation on the next slide. My recommendation as your sheriff is that we need to begin reversing. And I kind of set the stage when I talked to you a couple of months ago. All of you are well aware of the lead time it takes me to create deputy sheriffs and how hard it is. Not the fact that we have jobs available, but people qualified for those jobs. And it is my responsibility, and many of you have written up horror stories when people get into dropping standards to end up just hiring bodies. We've had already a number of high-profile corruption issues in agencies where they drop those standards and indeed to end up knee-jerking and gathering as many people as they can to meet a quota as opposed to keeping the standards high like we do in the Riverside County Sheriff's Department. We need to begin, I can give you the savings we did this year, just as I committed to you. But as I told you then, and I've told you since, that needs to be a short-term view as far as our perspective on it. I don't think we'll see for a long time ever going back to 1.1 or 1.2 per thousand. I think we all get that. But it is my professional recommendation that we begin moving back up to 1.0. It will take me 12 to 18 months just to rebuild that force and get that. The net gain, other than just offsetting attrition and holding my head at water level, but to get a net bump of 50 deputies, what our projection is it would take to get us back up to that level, it's really critical that we begin moving in that direction. Even if you gave me unlimited amounts of money, I could not spend it all because it takes you too long to create the deputy sheriffs. We have three academies scheduled for next year, so I have three basic platforms. One in August, another one in the fall, in October, November timeframe, and another one in the spring. The maximum class size they can put in is about 75 per. I need a sense from the board, regardless of whether you buy off on the entire thing because you could stop it at any point during the fiscal year, but I need to end up putting, begin putting people in the pipeline. And that includes the recruiting portion of it, the testing portion of it, all that stuff. I need to begin moving now. If you want me to have this fixed by the following fiscal year, because this will not be fixed this year, and the 50 deputies that I want that are new will not all be hired at the front end. They'll be staged throughout the year because that's the fastest I can get it. And I will be challenged just to end up getting that number of deputies in. But it will take me till probably somewhere after January of 2014. If you tell me in July, that's how long. If we wait, then you can add on those number of months before we see any relief out of it. But I will be basically teetering on use of overtime in the unincorporated area from fall on, on that. When I have somebody gone to fill the position, so there's a backup officer, it'll be somebody else, basically existing staff stretched out of overtime. Next slide. These are, the summary of my recommendation, as I said, is that I get direction now or at least a sense, sheriff, do what you need to do so we don't free-fall and begin moving in that direction. And as I said, if you change direction on me and say, "Stop it because of other expenses and so on," I get that. It's easier to stop something. It takes so long to get the train going and get the stuff in the pipeline. It's easier to stop than to start. But I need to start now. And I cannot wait till September. I need at least have a sense saying, "Sheriff, do what you need to do to keep it from free wolf fall," as I said. And I'll continue to work with the executive office on that. Jails, no secret, we're still short right now, about 4,000 beds. There's not enough money. I don't have the staff to deal with it. But clearly in the, like, 2020, that needs to be the fix in some way, some fashion. And I'm sure the staffers will come up with a more precise number, but I'm pretty comfortable this is going to end up being the number. In another year, this county, which is more populous than San Bernardino, will have about roughly 50% of the jail capacity that San Bernardino does. And San Bernardino is already overcrowded and will be after they open up their expansion on that. That's how deep in the hole we are in this county. I'd also encourage, as I did in March, that we begin parallel planning. And in some cases at the staff level, that is already going on with the CEO's office and with Rob Field and others, my own staff on that. And by that I mean, you do not have the ability at this point. My recommendation is that you not pursue that path where we think about one jail, then in a couple of years, another jail, another one. You don't have that luxury. We're already burning up right now. This morning, the Fed kicks are now pressing 2,500. So that means we'll have early releases out of our jail system that's busted at the seams since January. By the end of this calendar year, we'll be crossing 5,000. And I'll remind you that in 2007 was the biggest year we had Fed kicks when we released 6,001 prematurely. And we would have had the problem on overcrowding even without AB 109, but we did have a little bit of reprieve for a while thanks to the board direction on adding beds at Larry Smith Correctional Facility and the staff to go with it. But we are overcome and overwhelmed now by events with AB 109. That has literally just accelerated the splitting of the seams of the county jail system that serves every community in this county. So my suggestion to you is that we look at Indio. That clearly is one of the key areas. That will give us a bounce, about 1,200 beds in 2017. So that is a wise off. Larry Smith Correctional Facility between the county staff and my staff is being looked at. That is feasible. The devil will be in the details though, for us to give up beds to gain beds though is a little bit of a tricky thing when we're so far overwhelmed at this point. And the other there is a marker for you that you're going to have to, regardless of what you build at Larry Smith and Indio, we are going to have to have also consideration of another jail facility or expansion somewhere. I don't recommend downtown, way too expensive, way too crowded. The jail here is already perfectly sized and I really do not want the department to become involved in vertical high-rise jails. Not effective use of staff. And longer after I'm gone, some future sheriff will be paying a dear price on, and you, and future boards will, just on the labor costs of running those type of facilities. Down flat, wide, in a rural area, but still near trafficked areas that have all the support apparatus is the way to go. But my point to you, it's going to end up taking three different directions simultaneously and the planning is going to have to be parallel, concurrent, and non-sequential. The 911 cellular, you remember, I indicated what the issues were on that. You've already got board information from several months ago. Some of you are already aware of it. That cost is about, is a small thing in the grand scheme of things. Largely has to do with adding existing staff to dispatch that are vacant positions and runs about $400,000 bucks a year additional spending for the next three years. And I think that's going to be very critical. You remember one of the concerns we had on that are, obviously everybody uses cellphones now. It's really critical that not only the first call that gets patched over from California Highway Patrol ends up coming to us, but if you remember, those calls that come into our phone operators, our PSAP operators, are a form of intelligence. And what happens is frequently the other calls do not come. So the additional calls that come from the public typically paint the picture on a call in progress that the deputy or police officers are responding to. And so the clearer that picture is, the more information that deputy has in responding to that, the better able to make decisions. Contract city rates I've touched upon, that's one thing that I want to give you heads up. We will not know the precise impact, but there will be a fiscal impact. And I say that because as you well know, even as, like I do, working closely with our cities, every city right now wants to have zero costs passed on. And so one of the things I'm going to need your help in is also talking to each of those communities about the long-term savings that you're going to gain, but the short-term costs that we're incurring on that. And I do not have the ability to deviate from full cost recovery. That's the charge you've given me and that's the right way to end up spending public taxpayer dollars. But it will have an impact on many of those communities, as you know, that are fiscally on the ropes. And then the recruiting challenge, and I'll close with that. I hope that, and I work with all of you, and in many ways, many of you are very close personal friends of mine as well. I'd urge a lot of caution. I know that we've now completed all your different MOUs. The timelines that we're being driven by, by expanding the sheriff's office, regardless of what we do in the unincorporated area, but I'm talking specifically about jail operations, that is a massive increase in staffing. And my concern is, and I'm going to continue to echo this, you pay me to also, that end up speaking forthrightly, even if you may not concur, but anything that you do that hobbles me right now and the sheriff's office from gaining good employees. And my recommendation to you, and I'm going to come back, probably in more formal status on this, but it has to do with jail operations and whether we proceed forward on unincorporated. We got to be careful about being competitive. And as I showed you the data last time, the agencies within our county, agencies outside our county that would end up picking up our employees, that recently netted with about 48 of those employees, the other agencies, those young men and women that we spend a fortune on have a marketable skill. My problem is if you change the retirement system, that shuts off any avenue of having people that have lateral experience. In other words, turnkey officers that we don't invest any money to train, pay for, they just come to work, we wind them up, put them out there. I don't have that luxury. And for those that would end up staying with our department, they'll stay for a brief amount of time, check the box, and they're going to migrate pretty quickly in their career just as I did many years ago to go to an agency that has better benefits. So pay, benefits, both those things are linked. And what I would request of you, and again, not a formal request at this point, but I will be coming back, is be careful. You need to move on pension overhaul. There is no issue up and down the state, that that's critical. But all five of you know that there's a big chunk of miscellaneous and there's also the safety folks. I don't need police officers and thankfully you kept the retiring age of 50. And I don't need police officers and deputy sheriffs working the front lines that are in their 50s. That's not, that'll be a workers' comp nightmare anyway. But the larger issue is we cannot afford to have the turnover. And if you're going to get a net increase in my workforce, I would at least wait for a bit to make sure that we're absolutely correct before we pull the trigger on the 2% of 50, even though you've got it in your hands. So with that, I'll close.
Okay, thank you Sheriff Stimp. We do have comments by members of the board, first Supervisor Benoit, followed by Supervisor Stone.
You're to be committed for an effort to try and stay within the budget and to meet the goals that were set, that were aggressive. We appreciate that. Certainly no one of us here is not very concerned about public safety and is a portion of our county budget, what we have control of, it's biggest and it should be, and it's grown more than anything else it should. But it is still going to be a tough, tough time and we all know that. And I appreciate where you're coming from as far as preparing for hiring, preparing for jails, preparing, being competitive. Those are all solid messages. We'll work with you the best we can and beat all those. One area I wanted to ask you about specifically, your 911 costs. I have a little familiarity with Highway Patrol. I know that to the extent they can, they want to give you the work, but not mention the fact that they get some 911 reimbursement. I think we've talked about this before. I want to know, have we pursued that and will we be able to see some of the little bits on everybody's phone bill that should shift with the workload?
Yes, and the answer is, we already have seen some of that. What I've been pounding over the head and shoulders for the last, and this is not a recent issue as you know, but the Highway Patrol Senior Command has approached me a couple of times and it's killing them on their end of it because they're, the workload for us, because we're a very large agency, is also impacting them. So they're picking up our freight so to speak. But I've committed to them to work with the board in this county to end up trying to get a resolution. And in fact, because of the deference on the budget issues this last year, I really shouldn't have brought it forward, but the timing on it was just bad. But I did commit to them to do the right thing and to get this policed up at the first available opportunity. And so they've not been breathing on my back recently. As I indicated though, the tactical reason for us wanting this, so it's not just being pushed on, is very clear-cut and apparent. And it has to do with the safety of our communities, has to do with the safety of our officers responding, on getting all those additional calls. And that's the part that we're kind of blinded on. And it skews our stats a lot too, on the number of calls that are coming in. And so the real workload that's going on that we're not aware of out there in the county doesn't help us at all as far as meeting the public expectations. But to answer your question, we've already got some of that funding. We just need to do the part we're committed to. And then the other thing too, thank you for the comments on that, on the executive staff and the other chain of command. Those folks that work underneath me that manage the day-to-day fares, as I indicated to you earlier, took this mission all very head-on, face-on, and micromanaged it at very high levels. So week to week, they were monitoring almost constantly wherever they saw grips and terrors in the fiscal issues, they were going to put this across purposes with board guidance on how we end up being within the budget. And our direction was beyond whatever the board put, we were going to serve. I have to do what I have to do to serve all our communities and run the agency. But on the other hand, short of that, you can always count on the department being as rural as possible. It's very expensive, but we try really hard to end up making back any type of purchases or do anything we can to end up mitigating any increases in costs on it. So I'm pleased to see that we got about a $12 million swing on that. If I'd had an emergency, some of that would have been gobbled up on fire evacuations. And as you know, my feeling is I will take care, on your behalf, I will take care of the public and that will come first. And then we'll find a way through back channels to pay that. But we've been blessed with a great relationship with the fire department here in Riverside County and we've not had any, knock on wood, big catastrophes that we've had to wrestle with.
All right Supervisor Stone, followed by Supervisor Ashley.
Good morning and thank you, Mr. Chair Sheriff. I just want to applaud you. These are very challenging economic times. You're coming to the board today with a $6 million surplus. That's commendable. And I'm sure we'll be hearing from the district attorney, who will be giving the same compliments. With regard to competitiveness, I understand your concern. I understand the time delays that it takes to hire a deputy. I understand that 2% to 3% of all those that are interviewed ultimately will go through the academy and maybe get hired. So I understand those challenges. But you also have to look at what transpired in this past election in the cities of San Jose and San Diego. The citizens are upset about the public pension system. And for those public agencies that don't respond in a responsible, prudent way, the citizens are doing it by measures and by initiatives. I'm very proud of our county, without the need for an initiative, successfully negotiated contracts with all the unions, including the Riverside Sheriff's Association. I understand this created some compassion issues for you. But I think that those agencies that have not done what's prudent, have not done what's responsible, are going to find themselves in fiscal jeopardy. So I think you're only beginning to see the financial ramifications that other cities and potentially other counties are going to be facing that do not step up to the plate to reduce their pension obligations. With regard to our jail system, again, I want to congratulate you and our staff for the $100 million grant money that we just received. And I'm in complete support of you and this board to dedicate those funds to Indio and to get, you know, another 1,200 beds or so built there. Which you know as well as I do, if we start it tomorrow, you're not going to see those beds until probably 2015, 2016. At which time you may be, and all kidding aside, you may be releasing 9,000 to 10,000 people a year. Because I don't see any ease in capacity prior to that date. I know that you're working with Supervisor Ashley, Lieutenant Smith, to see what we can do there. I always welcome the opportunity at Southwest if you need any assistance there. I would be very supportive of expanding our facilities there. But you know as well as I do, you shared this to me on more than one occasion, we need a mid-county jail. And we need to have a shelf-ready project so that when this problem becomes much more pervasive up and down this state, which I believe it will in the upcoming years, the legislature is going to respond by making more money available for jail construction. So this board is going to have to decide, either we're going to keep this Whitewater site that we've invested $23 million in, or this board needs to collectively say to our facilities management, to our executive office, "No, we don't want that site. Sell it, go find another site." But we need to begin that planning process now to have a shelf-ready project. So when and if there is grant funding, we will be able to begin construction of the ultimate facility that is going to forever, or at least during my lifetime, prevent the early release of criminals, which I think is totally irresponsible. Not you being irresponsible, I think that the government has placed us in an irresponsible position. And I think we should adopt another program. I think we should adopt a program that, we should coggle up all the early releases. And I think this board would probably support it with one-way Greyhound ticket and we should drop them right off of the footsteps of the county capitol. Let's not make it a Riverside County problem anymore with the early releases. Let's send them to Sacramento County and let our good friend, CEO there, what's his name?
Brad Hudson.
Brad Hudson. Let's send Brad Hudson a little care package from Riverside County. Let's drop them right off of the footsteps of the capitol. And that way they no longer become Riverside County's problem. They're incarcerated in a different sense, up in Sacramento. Let the legislators there see the devastation and the impacts and not put our citizens in jeopardy. But again, I want to compliment you. With regard to starting more academies, there was a time in the past when this board gave you the positive move to start training deputies. And you invested a significant amount of money in deputies and then of course the economic climate went into the tank and a lot of these deputies would not get hired on. They would be laterling out at the expense of the taxpayers of Riverside County. So what I would suggest is that we have some type of phased-in approach. I agree with you, I don't want to see our service levels dip any further. I think it's frightening that we could ever get down to .75 per thousand. I feel much more comfortable at 1 per thousand. But I believe that this board should take some of the $6 million that you have brought back to the table and use a portion of that to get an academy started and begin the process of rebuilding the department to ensure the safety of our residents. So thank you for all your good work Sheriff.
Thank you. And the basic concept is to take some of that surplus, not all of it certainly, but some of it and reinvest it. And the 50 deputies would in fact be staggered throughout the year because I just, I don't have the ability to, even if you wanted to, I could not start them all up in July. They will be staggered and it'll be a challenge just to get to the 50 throughout. Just a brief comment on the pension issues. As I said, I share the issue as most Californians and most Americans this time on pension reform. The only thing that I would caution, and I talk a lot about this with the public, is that we need to be very careful we don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. It'd be very awkward for the county to make a sudden decision when the professionals are also advising you this is a dangerous ground and make a decision, just end up doing a complete 180-degree change because we're panicked after spending hundreds of millions of dollars and we can't staff. And the sheriff can't keep people employed because they're going to hire, we're going to pay for the hiring of it, the training of the individual, and then they're going to flee off to another agency. And we can't prohibit that. But that's going to be an awkward circumstance when we have to come back and ask for bonuses and all sorts of other things to end up changing it. And my, the issue about unions, remember, the unions are going to end up taking care of their current members. And so there's less of concern, other than for those of us that are running these institutions, about what follows along because their folks are already all grandfathered in. And so that doesn't change. And it's like somebody else's issue to end up dealing with that challenge. Well, it's my issue and the subsequent sheriffs in this county that'll be reeling from that. And my caution to you is you may well have to go And my caution to you is, you may well have to go forward with doing that. My caution to you is, make hay slowly on it. All of you know the first rule of wingwalking is to hang on to something solid, and not just jump into the abyss, and there's no reason you can't phase into part of that as well. That's my recommendation.
Thank you, Sheriff.
I just heard you say, one of the first concepts of wingwalking?
No, I said, one of the first issues on wingwalking, uh, wingwalking is to end up hanging on to something solid when you're walking on the edge of it, not just stand on the very edge of the wing.
And have you been crazy enough to even try that?
No, and those of you who know me know, I'm very, very conservative, so I don't like to even go above ground, because gravity is not normally your friend.
I agree. All right, Supervisor Ashley, followed by Supervisor Wester.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. To you, I wanna commend the sheriff, he just did a fantastic job of keeping us safe under very difficult circumstances, along with a real good work the district attorney's office has done, and also our probation department. We really, we owe you a huge debt on that. Also wanna commend you for the saving, $6 million, you started $5 million, now $5 million in the hole, almost $6 million in the hole, and now you've been able to come up with $6 million saving your budget, it looks like, the way things are going this year, and you seem pretty confident about that. And a little comment about the, you know, the 2% of 50, it's, it actually might not be, you know, you're concerned, you know, about the recruiting on that. So we know that you have attrition regardless of what's going on, there's always a lot of attrition in your department, retirements, and people just have to transfer out, and even normal time you have huge attrition. And it looks like what we're gonna have to need to do is, I think we're gonna invest part of that $6 million, if we can do that structurally within the budget, if we can't do that, then bust the budget, it's got to sell the structurally balanced. If we can do that, it looks like that's a distinct possibility, the main, and something we should definitely consider. But if you look at it, it's gonna take a long time, you know, to create those deputies, and also you were getting into that 2% of 50, anybody that's coming into this academy wants to be sure they know about that new tier, so they may prefer to have the old tier. It's gonna hurt you maybe in getting laterals for a while, but this is, I think, is a short-run problem, and at the most, a medium-term problem, because what's happened, all of California is adjusting to a new paradigm, it's sweeping through, nodding through California, through the nation, and it's, over time, as they equalize, and I think your recruiting won't be okay, but I recognize you definitely have a short-term, a medium-term problem. And one way we can help you is with an academy, and get some deputies, try to, we may need that just to keep your levels at where they are, you may not be able to get to one, even though we do this, because it's a problem that you've pointed out, I think, correctly. So summary, I wanna say I agree with Supervisor Stone, and also with you, I think we need to start, start the academy, to start trying to, you know, to keep our numbers at least where they are, and try to get them to one over time, and long provided we can do it with a structurally balanced budget. On the jails, we agree, we have to look at everything all at once, and we're doing that, we're like, right now, everything's being looked at, and Indio is really on the fast track. And we need to get as much, the fastest we get jail beds to you, where we can get them, we need to get them. But no matter what we do, and no matter, we still are not gonna have enough jails, we're still going to need a mid-county justice center. So the planning on that, even though it's really a long-term plan, because you have to get that ready to go when it comes behind your easier fixes, easier jail beds or something, that needs to go on, and so I think we still need a mid-county justice center, and it's still, it may not be quite as large, but it's still gonna be significant. And I still feel that, you know, the Whitewater location's the right location, and I think we should plan, our median long-range planning should include Whitewater. Thank you very much.
Supervisor Wester. Sheriff, we appreciate your, your keeping the lid on increasing costs here for the short term, so that we can get the budget stabilized over the next couple of years, really appreciate it. And I understand you're gonna make, begin to make longer-term decisions. I would just inject that we need to take a broader approach to some of these areas where we know that costs are going to escalate no matter what we do, like the jails, or even like patrol. In the patrol area, you didn't mention what's going on with the crime rate out there. Are you, do you, I mean, at one point you told us there were red flags, it was just a couple of years ago, there were red flags out there, I think was the term used, and yet, and yet consistently, and I don't see the whole picture as you do, but at least in our district, in the unincorporated areas, your captains, your lieutenants are reporting, I don't know, 20% or 15% reductions in actual crime taking place, which is great news, and you wanna make sure you don't, you don't, as you say, get to the, pass the bottom where then things start to, start to happen again, and you can't get control of it. I understand all that, the prevented nature of a lot of your programs being lost is a serious matter, even if the crime rate does not increase. But what's going on out there, Jim? What do you see?
Well, Supervisor, I didn't take the time this time, but I gave plenty of statistics this last, just two months ago, including our response times going way up, also the crime patterns that were going on, and went in considerable detail, all 10 station areas. I'd be happy to bring that back, but I didn't really wanna bounce the rubble, so, but for the record, I have talked to you specifically about crimes in all the different areas, and if you remember, I touched specifically about the eastern end of the Coachella Valley, where the media is doing an ample job of talking about the huge surge in crime issues, and in the Hemet Sandusso Valley, which is very well-known to everybody. So I'm happy to bring that stuff back, but I didn't think it was gonna be good to bring back the same information to you again and again.
I think some kind of a ongoing update would be very helpful to all of us who sit up here, and to the public as well. And we hear it at various meetings, your staff and whatnot, but here to the board, I think it'd be helpful to have a quarterly idea where things are headed. Now, on the, on the various loss of positions in patrol, contrasted with other major segments of the department, the last report that I saw on your filled positions, and whether they were going up or down, was there were increases in support, increases in management, increases in coronerside, but the only area of losses was in unincorporated patrol. Why?
I think most of those areas are being held. The only increases you're seeing in any of the divisions right now is in corrections, jails, and for the reasons that the board is already well-familiar with. We got, we got money to add positions, so that is growing, and as I said at the outset, the other areas are not growing. So I don't know what you're speaking of, Supervisor.
Well, I guess what I'm getting to is, here in the last week or so, we were talking about management, obviously, turning the whole line on increases there in pay, but also looking at restructuring our non-safety management, so that, so that we can continue to function here, and yet have a better, more flexible lines of control, and maybe eliminate some of the traditional hierarchies that existed here in Hemet County, consistent with our actual revenue picture out there.
What is it exactly that you're specifying that we need to reduce, Supervisor?
Well, we don't know, have a good idea what your support ratio is, for example, per unincorporated deputy. How has that changed? Has it been reduced commensurate?
Yes, it has. In fact, I gave you in March the complete graphic of all the folks at all different pay grades that are part of the unincorporated area. We'd be happy to share that with you again.
And management, commensurate also?
Yes, all the way up through captain.
All right, I would, I would, I would like to see a fuller detailing of that, I think that'd be very helpful as well. And finally, on the jail side, about, what is it, 60 to 70% of the folks in our jails are awaiting trial, or have not been sentenced yet. There are many counties that are striking out on a new path, that they feel actually not only saves costs, but actually can improve outcomes for the community and the, those that are awaiting trial. And that is rather than spend, I don't know, statewide, it's $100 a bed per day, of actually improving their probation programs and consistent with the courts, and the judges being able to supervise those people awaiting, awaiting trial in the community, based on their, how dangerous they are, rather than on whether or not economically they can make bail. And I understand there have been quite a few cases statewide where some of the most dangerous offenders are able to make bail, because they have the financial wherewithal, whereas, whereas those that would profit from pre-trial oversight in the community, particularly worked out with the courts, with the public defender's office, and with the DA's office, such that we could have a safer, a safer community, and we would not be in this backed-up position of responding to this, what is it, 4,000-bed, I mean, it's a virtual industry here that we're gonna be creating, when, as I say, there is, it's not a new approach, it's an old approach, and, but it's being revived now throughout the state, in many, many counties, and I think we need to look at that so much more closely. And we have had no discussion of that whatsoever here at this board level, and it is what is the main thing that's gonna drive, drive our county-wide costs in the future. We need to do both, and we're leaving out one important part of the equation.
Well, we're not, Supervisor. In fact, the board, I'm sure is well aware of, I don't know whether you took the opportunity to read it, but you'll look at the AB 109 staffing plan, put together by Probation Umbrella, that has all the different components that you just mentioned, including courts, all dealing with that issue, so it is not new to Riverside County. But I would encourage you to go back and read that document, it was a little bit lengthy, but it has considerable detail you're talking about. The bail issue is something that's been going on up and down the state. Unfortunately, the sheriff doesn't control the bail issue, the courts control that. That has certainly been a part of the discussion, not only among our working group and the executive committee, but also within the criminal justice system. The fundamental issue is, we book nearly 60,000 adults into a jail system that is way too small. And those same issues you just framed are the same issues that are framing LA County, same issues that are framing San Bernardino County, and as I just stated, San Bernardino's already got major problems, and are gonna be soon double the capacity. There is no issue, you know, fundamentally from my perspective, and I think most of the public is beginning to see this, and I know most of the board does, the jail system in here, regardless of all these other issues you raised, is way too small, and we are not gonna get away from end up adding jail capacity. We got overwhelmed due to all the growth, we would eventually have been the same problem, but is really exacerbated by AB 109. But the points you make are valid, but they're already in the mix and already under discussion by all of us in this professional field.